I'm in Denver, Colorado. Seven p.m. It's the U.S. government's official clock. Good evening and welcome to your city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, February 2, 2021, and it is 7:00 p.m. In an effort to minimize spread of COVID-19, Governor Newsom issued an executive order that temporarily suspends the requirements of the Brown Act. Given this executive order, the Laguna Nigal City Council chambers are closed to the public until further notice. Members of the public are strongly encouraged to observe the city council meeting live, online via YouTube Live streaming that can be accessed on the city's website. Members of the public may submit comments on any agenda item on or any item not on the agenda by email to our mighty city clerk at egomez@cityoflagunonigal.org. All comments received prior to the deadline will be read into the record up to the time limit of three minutes. Any portion of the comment not read aloud due to time restrictions will still be included in the written record. The city of Laguna Nigal thanks you in advance for taking all precautions to prevent the spread of COVID-19. With that, Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Rains?
Here.
Councilmember Sharma?
Present.
Mayor Protem Janeway?
Present.
And Mayor Minigar?
Present.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
At this joint chair, I would like to ask our Madam Mayor Protem Elaine Janeway to provide us the invocation, please, and followed by the pledge of allegiance by city council member Sandy Rains.
Please rise. Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us here together today to do the will of your people. We strive to do what is right for our community, both immediate and extended. Please have our conversation be one of learning and understanding. May our actions be those of your will. May our words be those of your choosing. In your name we pray this. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Our first presentation this evening serves to commemorate and memorialize our sincere appreciation for our former Chief of Police Services, my favorite, Matt McDaniel. Former Chief McDaniel retired recently on January 6th after serving two years as the Chief of Police Services for our great, beautiful city. As mayor, it is my pleasure to thank Chief McDaniel for his dedicated service to ensuring public safety here in the beautiful city of Laguna Nigal. Chief McDaniel proudly served the citizens of Orange County for over 29 years through his public service in the Orange County Sheriff's Department. In his role as Chief of Police Services for the city of Laguna Nigal, Chief McDaniel built an incredible team of public safety professionals. He upheld the highest standard of integrity for law enforcement, and he successfully established longstanding and meaningful connections with members of the community. I'm personally very proud of you. Chief McDaniel was selfless in his service to our residents and businesses, and he effectively ensured that the safety and security of Laguna Nigal was a priority, not only to be maintained, but also to be built upon. As a resident, a business owner, and an elected official, I truly appreciate what former Chief McDaniel has done for our great city. As the mayor of Laguna Nigal and on behalf of the entire city council colleagues, I would like to thank former Chief Matt McDaniel for everything that he has done for the Laguna Nigal community. And although we already miss him, we wish him the very best in his well-deserved retirement. Former Chief McDaniel, here this evening, and he's joined by his lovely wife. To memorialize your honorable service to the city of Laguna Nigal, my city council colleagues and I would like to present you with this formal resolution, which I will read aloud. Yes. I think with proper social distancing, I can take off my mask. I'm not... Who's gonna take the measurement? Director of Public Works to make sure that it's six feet? My wife's not gonna be happy with me, but that's okay. Whereas Chief of Police Services, Matt McDaniel served local communities for over 29 years with the Orange County Sheriff's Department and was appointed as Chief of Police Services for the city of Laguna Nigal in January 2018. And whereas Chief McDaniel is recognized for his strengths and attributes related to problem-solving, strategic thinking, principles of leadership, community engagement, integrity, and professionalism. And whereas Chief McDaniel managed 65 Orange County Sheriff's Department personnel, two City of Laguna Nigal personnel, 22 police auxiliary citizens team, AKA PACT members, and 30 CERT and 15 ACES emergency management volunteers. And whereas Chief McDaniel is recognized for his commitment to promoting the city of Laguna Nigal's mission, vision, and guiding values, and there are so many whereas. You're special. Whereas Chief McDaniel began his career in public service as deputy sheriff and later as a field training officer in the only city in Orange County that I'm very proud of, Laguna Nigal, for 12 years. And whereas Chief McDaniel served in the position of sergeant in multiple capacities, including the city of Yorbalinda as the Orange County Central Men's Jail, and at the Theo Lacy Facility where he later served as lieutenant. And whereas Chief McDaniel developed professionally by holding numerous California Peace Officer Standards and Trainings, AKA post in management and supervisory certificates, and graduating from the Sherman Block Supervisory Institute facilitated by California State University, Long Beach. And whereas, we've got quite a few more to go. Chief McDaniel always valued Laguna Nigal public safety in the highest regard through his professional actions and through the implementation of the Laguna Nigal Strategic Plan. And whereas on January 6, 2021, Chief McDaniel retired from, retired his career in public service law enforcement after nearly a total of 15 cumulative years serving the beautiful city of Laguna Nigal. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Laguna Nigal City Council does hereby commend Chief Mc, Matt McDaniel for his exemplary years of dedicated service and commitment to the city of Laguna Nigal, and extends to him best wishes in his future endeavors. With that, on behalf of the entire city council, on behalf of the City of Laguna Nigal Chamber of Commerce, I would like to present you with this recognition. And this bouquet of flowers is for your lovely wife that is patiently sitting there. And I don't know if I need to go back and wear my mask. But with all due respect, it's a pleasure. And I wanted to ask my city council colleagues if they have any comments. I want to start off with Councilmember Kelly Jennings. Does have a prepared message?
Yes, otherwise I would cry and forget, and I had to write it down. So, we pause tonight to reflect on the tremendous service of Captain Matt McDaniel upon his retirement from the Orange County Sheriff's Department as the Chief of Police for Laguna Nigal Police Services. The simple words "thank you" never seem to say enough or convey enough what my heart and the hearts of everyone in Laguna Nigal feel for the retirement of someone who spent his career protecting us from all the many evils that might come her way, but for his service. You have been a leader, a protector, a true public servant in every conceivable way. I once read that a leader is one who knows the way, goes the way, and shows the way. I think that fits so perfectly for you, Chief. You are without question a kind, honest, and compassionate leader who exemplifies everything valued and needed in modern law enforcement. So tonight, I guess I'm left with only "thank you" to say, but steeped in those simple words are the thought and appreciation of a great city for your career, full of helping those in need of protection and ensuring justice always meant doing the right thing in the right way. Congratulations, Matt. Thank you, and Godspeed for a truly wonderful adventure with your beautiful wife, Jamie, and your amazing family. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Sandy Rains?
Okay. Matt, it's been a privilege and honor to know you and to watch you serve our great community here in Laguna Nigal. I've traveled a lot in my business, and I feel very blessed to have a city where we're one of the safest cities to live in, and that is no small feat. And I know you and your department are responsible for that. They say that a great leader is measured by the size of the obstacle that it takes to stop them. And this past year, you had many, many obstacles as we endured many different things in our country and in our city and in our county. And you persevered, and you led with grace, and we really appreciate you for that. I'd be remiss not to say there's no great leader that doesn't have a great family behind them. So I want to take this opportunity to say thank you to your family, Jamie, your daughters, grandchildren. It's your, and Mom. Mom's here too, Carol. It's your support, what you do behind the scenes. It's your support, what you do behind the scenes, and what you do for him when he's having a bad day that makes him be able to show up here and do what he did for us. So this is not just thank you, Matt, but it's thank you to your entire family. We really appreciate you, and I wish you the best. And Janie, get the to-do list, the honey list, now it'll get done. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Richie Sharma.
Chief McDaniel, it's been a pleasure getting to know you and meeting your family for the first time for myself. You've given a lot of service to our community, and that's come, I'm sure, over the years at a lot of cost to your family. As a father, as a husband, as a son, the sacrifices that you and your family have made, I'm so humbly appreciative. I look forward to getting to know more about you and your retirement, and thank you again for your service and leadership to our community.
Thank you. And last but certainly not least, Mayor Pro Tem Elaine Genoway.
Okay. And I'm gonna do this without crying. You know, I remember when we were first talking to you, when you wanted to come to Laguna Niguel, and we'd see you and Janie out there in the foyer and before our meetings, and you really impressed me how your family was gonna become part of our family. And that is part of the culture that you have made in police services. And you've led in a way that I think is extraordinary, because we've seen the strife across our nation this past year, but it did not touch Laguna Niguel. And you've always led with education first, whether it be your department or our community. And I love how you engage with our residents. And you know, the youth is a special passion of mine, and you have been there for the youth of our community and have engaged with them so that they have positive role models in law enforcement and know that... Oh gosh, I'm gonna start crying now. And they know that our law enforcement is on their side and wants them to be successful. So you've really set the mold or the model in Laguna Niguel for our culture of police services, and we greatly, greatly appreciate that. And I just say that it's bittersweet. It's sad to see you go, but it's a well-deserved retirement, and your family has shared you with us, so now you get to spend some more time with your family. But you and Janie and your mom, your children and your grandchildren, and especially Claire, will always be part of the Laguna Niguel family. So God bless you and God bless your family. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you. Oh, we have to go through the protocol.
Thank you. Thank you for the great comments. That was so nice. I told myself I was well past the crying stage when I said goodbye to my people, but I'm pretty close here. So, relationship is what I think about when I think about the city. It starts with you folks. You guys have been nothing but supportive to our team entirely, not just with safety issues, but you definitely combat safety issues when we have them. I don't think a meeting goes by where you don't ask, what can we do for you or what do you need? That's not the case everywhere, so that's really special for us and our team to have. But you're also there every time we have an event. You come, you support, you put it out there that you are pro-safety and pro-public safety and pro-us, and that means a ton to us. While I have this microphone, I want to thank the department heads who made this job easy. Thank you for making us look good. Thank you for the open door. Thank you for your counsel, and thank you for just getting things done. And I just so appreciate the open relationship we've had, and I could pop in anybody's office and have a good conversation and get stuff done. So I thank you for that. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the citizens of this city. They are the third leg of what we do here. They are the most important thing. They tell us what's going on in the city, where the problem areas are. And in this last year that was mentioned, it was a really tough time, but those citizens came through with cards, notes, lunches, baked goods, letting our people know that they are special and that they are needed. And I don't know that every city had that, and on our toughest days, that meant a lot to our people, and I just think that's so fantastic. And you don't get that in every community, but we certainly got it here. You mentioned my family. Thank you to my family, and I don't want to cry here. Thank you for being with me this whole time, supporting me. You've been great to me. Babe, you've been nothing but a blessing and a rock for me. I spent every holiday here for the last three years, which means I wasn't always with you folks, but you're gonna get sick of me from here on out, so... And I look forward to that. And finally, any accolades you want to give me for my time here, that belongs to the men and women who put the uniform on every day, answer the calls every day, see people on their absolute worst day, and just nail it with patience, kindness, and professionalism to just get the job done. So I'm gonna miss them the most. Thank you all for everything. This is great. This means a great deal to me and my family, so thank you so much. I'm sorry, is this still on? Can I say two more things? I'm sorry, I've taken the whole night, but I meant to thank you, Justin, and you, Tammy. I thought especially during COVID, you guys provided some fantastic leadership that was absent in other places at a really tough time. So thank you. Thank you for the relationship. Thank you for the open door. I appreciate it so much. To the citizens of this city, you got a great captain coming here who's here now. I've known him for 18, 19 years, and he's gonna do a fantastic job for you. This will absolutely continue to be one of the safest cities and the most beautiful cities, not just in Orange County, but California. Thank you, guys.
Very good. Our second presentation this evening is to introduce the community to our new chief of police services, Chief Virgil Asensio. Chief Asensio is a law enforcement veteran who has served numerous Orange County communities over the past two decades, including the cities of Aliso Viejo, San Juan Capistrano, and even right here in the great city of Laguna Niguel. Throughout his career in public safety, Chief Asensio climbed the ranks in the Orange County Sheriff's Department. He came to us with valuable experience gained in the city municipal realm, as well as with diverse experience throughout the varying divisions of the Sheriff's Department. His developed leadership skills will provide him with the ability to effectively support and enhance our community's commitment to public safety and to continue the great momentum that former chief Matt McDaniel created during his tenure. I'm confident that the high level of safety and security that Laguna Niguel residents enjoy and expect will be maintained through Chief Asensio's leadership. My city council colleagues and I are pleased to welcome Chief Asensio to the Laguna Niguel community, and we are excited to be able to formally welcome this evening. Chief Asensio is here with us this evening, and joining him is his wife. To formally welcome you to the City of Laguna Niguel family, I would like to present you with your official City of Laguna Niguel pin. I wanted to start off with council member Kelly Jennings.
Well, first of all, chief, welcome. We're so happy you're here. So it's clear that by your presence here, you've made some great choices in your life and career. I must say, however, that the choice of joining us in Laguna Niguel may someday end up being one of your favorites. I've always said that Laguna Niguel just seems to be an exceptional exception, or perhaps a scenic detour away from the outside world. There is still great measure of kindness, decency, and community in Laguna Niguel that is comprised of equal parts, a holdover from a more neighborly time, and a newer, kinder way of living together and seeing the value that everyone brings that make Laguna Niguel so special. So welcome, chief, and I look forward to working alongside you and your deputies in service to others, so thank you.
Council member Sandy Rains.
Welcome. It's always bittersweet when we say goodbye to somebody and then we welcome someone new, but after having the opportunity to meet with you and talk about your goals and your vision for what you see here in Laguna Niguel, and we've already seen some of the great work you've done just in this short first month, so I appreciate it so much, Chief Asensio. And I want to thank your wife Natasha and your wonderful, beautiful boys. They're being very patient, and we appreciate you very much. This will mean something down the road someday. You'll look at these pictures and you'll be like, wow, that was cool, even though maybe it doesn't feel so cool right now. But we so appreciate you being here to support your dad, and we thank you for giving your time for your dad to be here instead of with you. So we appreciate that. Just remember, when you're feeling that titch where you want dad around and he's busy, he's protecting a lot of people, and it's really important to a lot of communities, and so we appreciate that. And thank you again, and welcome. I look forward to working with you.
Council member Richie Sharma.
So I remember the morning after my wedding night, I woke up and I looked at my now-wife, and I said, I guess I have a new title. I'm a husband. And it took forever, it seemed, to get used to that new title. So you now have a new title of chief, and I'm sure you'll be practicing it and exercising it over the coming weeks and months. But truthfully, your entire family has that same title. The sacrifices that all of you will be making over this next several years, and hopefully longer, we're so humbly appreciative to all of you. And thank you for coming to our city and leading us and working as alongside. I look forward to working alongside you as well. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Elaine Genoway.
Thank you, mayor. Well, Captain Asensio, welcome to the remarkable city of Laguna Niguel. We are so excited to have you. I remember when we talked to you during the interview process, I just loved your enthusiasm for our city. And it's not only the enthusiasm, but the extensive experience that you bring that will really serve our residents very well. But I know that they are excited to meet you, and I know you will be meeting a lot of our residents over the next month or so, but we look forward to working with you as a city council. Welcome to Natasha and to the boys. We're so glad you are part of the Laguna Niguel family now. I don't know if you knew that when you stepped into City Hall tonight, but you are now part of our family, and we're just delighted to have you here in our city, so look forward to working with you. Thank you for coming here.
Any comments that you may have? I'm gonna pass the mic.
First of all, I just want to thank the city council and the city manager's office for giving me this opportunity. This is where I kind of began my patrol career, so it's kind of cool to come back full circle and help mentor the deputies, investigators, and sergeants, as well served at the community. I'd also like to thank Sheriff Barnes and the Executive Command for their support, as well as Commander Puckett. I'd also like to thank Matt for, you know, giving me a great city and setting me up for success, so thank you so much. And lastly, I want to thank my lovely wife Natasha, my son Jacob, Jonathan, and Jamison for your support, your love, and understanding. You know, without them, I wouldn't be here. So thank you so much, and I love you guys. So thank you.
City council colleagues would indulge. Would you like to have a picture taken with your family first, and then...
Thank you. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. Tonight, we are presenting the mid-year budget update. Now that the second quarter of the fiscal year is complete, we find it prudent to keep the city council and the public informed of the city's financial position. Back in June, the city council adopted a balanced general fund operating budget. The original budget included 40.89 million of operating revenues, operating expenditures of 40.69 million, along with capital contributions of 4.2 million. In October of this past year, we presented the first quarter update. This included higher estimates of property tax revenue, sales tax revenue, and special funding from the federal government regarding the CARES Act. Given that it was still early in the fiscal year, the city decided not to allocate any of these revenues for spending. The city's two main sources of revenue are property taxes and sales taxes. Combined, they account for over 80% of all general fund revenue. At the first quarter update, the city conservatively increased the budget for property taxes from 22.8 million to 23.3 million. This increase was based on matching the actual receipts from the prior fiscal year. Between October and November, the county finalizes the tax roll and begins to send out invoices to property owners. In December, property owners need to pay the first installment. Based on this data extracted from the county auditor controller's office, we are able to identify what has been charged and confidently present a new estimate of 24.13 million. This is an increase of 771,000 from the prior estimate and 1.25 million more than the original. In regard to sales tax revenue, the city originally budgeted to receive 10.6 million. At the first quarter, we presented revised estimates based on data we received in July 2020 that increased this estimate to 11.2 million. Last month, the city received a new update from our consultant, and that estimate is just under 12.1 million. Although this is a sizable increase, the amount is actually very similar to prior year's receipts. Last year, for example, in 1920, the city received 12.23 million in sales tax revenues. These positive results are a reflection of cautious budgeting and conservative estimates, along with better-than-expected taxable sales within the city limits. As for expenditures, all spending citywide is at or below the budgeted predictions for the fiscal year. No changes to expenditures were recommended at the first quarter, even though revenues were increasing. We are halfway through the year, and revenues have far exceeded original projections during the most restrictive months of the pandemic. Given these factors, staff is recommending two adjustments. First, we are recommending the authorization to deposit $500,000 into the city's Section 115 pension trust. This special account was set up last year to address the city's pension debt. An initial deposit of 150,000 was placed in this account, and this has since grown to one, to over 167,000. All funds in this account are held as assets of the city and can be returned from the trustee when the city deems necessary. Second, we are recommending the restoration of certain employee salary measures. When this year's budget was originally being prepared, the COVID-19 pandemic has just started. Given the uncertainty of how this health crisis would impact our budget, we took the conservative route and assumed the worst. Concessions were made by all employees for the sake of balancing this budget. This included the freezing of merit increases for all employees, the planned 2.5% salary adjustment effective January 2021 being delayed until January, July of 2021, and a voluntary 5% salary reduction from our city manager. In light of these positive revenue results, the recommendation is to retroactively restore merit increases for the fiscal year, restore the delayed MOU increase effective January 2021, and retroactively restore the city manager's salary back to the original contract amount. The costs for these three action items is approximately $230,000. The city is in a strong position to maintain a balanced operating budget. Better-than-expected revenue projections through the first half of the fiscal year have strengthened the city's financial outlook. At the first quarter review, the city increased property tax and sales tax revenue estimates by 1,65,000. Adoption of this resolution as presented further bolsters the general fund position by another 935,000 for a total increase of just over $2 million. This has allowed the city to maintain operational standards, provide additional funding for future pension costs, and restore previously delayed salary obligations. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Public Works Director Scott for an update on the city's capital projects. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hendrickson, Honorable Mayor, and members of the city council. The fiscal year 2021 budget included nine capital improvement projects, which are now in various stages of completion. One of the recently completed projects is the Yosemite Park Bridge and Landscape Upgrades. This project renovated components of the pedestrian bridge and added brand-new landscaping. This project was complete in December of 2020. Currently under construction is the Niguel Road resurfacing Marina Hills to Highlands project that will repave over 1.5 miles of roadway. Next week, the contractor is scheduled to saw cut and remove broken sidewalk and gutters and begin the process to form new ADA-compliant access ramps. Also included in the project is new radar detection at the intersections of Alicia Parkway and Crown Valley Parkway. The use of radar detection will allow for a more smooth construction process, reduce ongoing maintenance costs, and reduce overall delay for motorists. The Paseo de Colinas groundwater repair project is scheduled to start next month. This project will intercept groundwater and put it in the city's storm drain before it surfaces near Cabot Road. This project is scheduled for completion this summer. Two projects are in the bidding phase. The residential annual resurfacing program for slurry zones 1 and 2 will be advertised for construction bids at the end of February. The construction will start during the summer months, when warmer weather allows for the application of the slurry coating to the roadway. Prior to that, the application, prior to the application of the slurry coating, roadway repairs will be performed that will fill cracks and patch sections of broken asphalt. Additionally, city maintenance contractors will be in the zones 1 and 2 neighborhoods over the next two to three months to repair sidewalk sections in advance of the project. The second project that's in the bidding phase is the restroom renovations at Sea Country Senior Center. This project will start construction in March and be complete this summer. There are currently three projects in design. Crown Valley westbound widening design is anticipated to be complete by April 2021. The accessible pedestrian push buttons design will be complete this spring with construction anticipated early summer. And the Aliso Creek Traffic Signal Synchronization Project, the, this project is led by the Orange County Transportation Authority in partnership with the city of Laguna Niguel in Aliso Viejo, and they have not quite started this project yet, but plan to do so in 2021. That concludes my update, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Thank you for your comprehensive presentation. I wanted to start off with my city council colleagues. I wanted to start with Councilmember Sharma, if he has any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a couple questions. Initially, my question would be posed to City Attorney Ennis. The, the discussion item has several different talking points in here. If we were to compartmentalize them, one is CIP expense, one is restoration of a pay cut, another one is restoration of expected pay increases. So, as I'm looking at this from my perspective, rather than having everything lump-summed under one discussion item, we should have compartmentalized them and separated them into discussion, separate discussion points. Would it, how can we approach that?
Yes, you may, as part of your discussion, have a discussion on each item individually, and you could take separate motions on each item. Or if you are inclined to have one package motion, that's also acceptable. If you end up deciding to take them individually, and there is a unanimity to have all of them approved, then we can have an amendment made to the resolution that we would do tonight. We would basically then have the resolution approved, but with, let's say, an elimination of one of the items.
Very good. Thank you. So, with that, I'm going to be addressing, and I don't know if there's a more procedural approach to doing this, but I'd like to see us discuss option number one here, singularly, two and three collectively, four singularly, and five singularly.
Councilmember Sharma, if I may interject, your points are well-taken. At this juncture, with regard to how we are going to be voting on each item, should be decided at the end of this deliberation. Let's move on with specific questions for item number one, two, three, and then we're going to go back to the entire city council to see that how the majority of my colleagues would decide would be the best for the city. How's that?
And that, the reason why I was compartmentalizing them is so that I could focus my questions.
I understand, I understand.
So, the, a couple points. Finance Director Hendrickson, what I heard was that we're halfway through the fiscal year, and the points that have been brought up are the revenues are coming in stronger than anticipated, but those are two primarily, the two drivers of that revenue are sales taxes and property
Correct.
Taxes. So, if I'm not mistaken, those are lagging indicators from an economic standpoint, which don't predict the future economic strength of the city, but more reflect, and that come on the back end of an economic situation or concern. So, if we're looking at these as leading indicators, we might be putting ourselves in a situation that we're unprepared for.
Well, I can speak to that. Yes, the property taxes, the number in front of you for the $24 million estimate is based on what was actually charged to the residents this fiscal year. Historically speaking, property taxes never go down. They only either stay flat or increase based on the county assessor's role. And as for sales taxes, again, this 12, $12 million number is based on a current year estimate from July to June. We do receive sales taxes two months in arrears, and that's as far as the collection process goes. But again, sales taxes is more volatile. If the economy does tank big time, that can go way down and vice versa. It can even boom next year, too. So, you are correct on that point on sales taxes, yes.
At this time, those are the only questions I have. Thank you.
Very good. Mayor Protem Elaine Genaway.
I don't have any questions at this time, but I'll have comments later.
Very good. Councilmember Kelly Jennings?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Councilmember Sandy Rains.
Okay. So, my first question is for Director Scott under the CIP projects. If I'm understanding this correctly, the majority of this budgeted CIP projects that you're completing or are in process are receiving funding from grant funding or SB1 or M1 monies as opposed to our general fund. Is that accurate? Or I think I only see 600,000 of general fund that comes out of the Crown Valley westbound widening, Aliso Creek. The rest all look like they're having funding that comes from grant money. Is that accurate statement?
Yes, as at a overall budgeting approach, we look to the restricted funds such as gas tax or other funding sources that are for a specific purpose, and we use those funds in the CIP first and minimize the amount of general fund that we would then allocate towards these projects.
So, has there been any indication, and this might be a question for you, Director Hendrickson as well, that some of these funds might not be available moving forward as a result of other revenues that the state or county might not have available to submit to us?
So far, we have no indication that either Measure M, which is the county sales tax, specifically applied towards roads, or
You mean Measure M2?
Measure M2, correct. Or the state gas tax money, which comes from fuel taxes when you pay at the pump. Any indication that we have that these are going to be declining, just haven't materialized? They're either going to be steady or steadily going up at this point.
Okay. That was my one question. The other question that I had was you indicated on the 115 trust that the amount had gone up to 167,000. Have you reported to us what the percent of return is on that and where we're at on, on how that
Yes.
Trust is working?
Yes, correct. In your investment report that you approved tonight, on page two, there is the summary of cash investments, and we do state on there the 115 trust. It's been earning anywhere between 1%, 2%, 3%, 4%. We put the money back in, fortunately, we put the money in in May, when the stock market was really low, and this is invested in a conservative mutual fund, I think a highly conservative mutual fund. But as most of you know, since March and April and May, the stock market has gone way up. So, that's where most of this gain has come from.
Okay. And then, I know you're working on budgets for '21, '22, so will there be a line item for the 115 trust if we were to vote to put this money in now, or would that be something that we would forego in the upcoming budget? I don't know.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely put that. I mean, this is a very
That's the plan.
Yes.
This would be a reoccurring
Line item.
Line item.
Okay. All right, so
That was the plan last year until COVID hit.
Right. That's what I was asking. So, even if we do this, we'll still have that as a line item. Okay. The only other, I guess it's not a question, it's some comments. So, if some, if, do you want me to give my comments, or do you want to give everyone's comments first?
It's really up to you. I mean, that's fine, because we're talking about item number one right now. We're zooming in on that one, and then we can proceed to the other ones. And then, at the end, we're going to decide how we are going to compartmentalize them, or we're going to be voting in a single one.
Okay. Well, I will have some other comments, but I'm done with my questions. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to piggyback on the questions that Councilmember Sandy Rains brought up. Basically, we have four projects in, under construction phase. We have two projects under design, and we have one project, which is Signal Sync, which is money is coming, management, administration is coming from Orange County Transportation Authority, that we get it from half a cent sales tax, that taxpayers of this great county would be contributing. So, my question goes back to our finance director that I'm pretty surprised that you see a positive outlook when I look at all the federal government's indices in reference to all those potential revenues. Not everybody's excelling in Orange County
No.
In California and in America. A lot of people are suffering. Therefore, a lot of people are reducing the expenditure based on how much activities they have, they've had, or they are going to have. A lot of people are unemployed. Therefore, they're not, and they are not going to be contributing to that half a cent sales tax that OCTA is extracting every year to collect so that they can come into every 34 cities in Orange County to give them money to do all these projects. And the same goes with SB1, Senate Bill 1, which is the Highway Act to, based on, again, sales tax of the state of California. So, having said that, knowing that this is the way the entire mechanics of all these grants, all these funding sources would work out, you do still, as the finance director, have a positive outlook that we are not going to be in negative territories when it comes down to those numbers and the money that we are going to be receiving from OCTA and SB1 through Sacramento to go to Caltrans, and then to trickle down to
Correct.
Caltrans District 12 in Orange County.
Yes, I still remain very positive in this outlook. For example, right now, we have $4.5 million already in our bank, already in the bank segregated from the general fund in the Measure M Fund and our gas tax fund for this residential annual resurfacing program. We've already received the cash for that. This one's ready to go. Any future revenues, if there is a dip, I hope there's not, but if there is, we can reduce our capital projects accordingly, maybe reduce, you know, 10%. If the revenues don't come in, we can always scale back how many roads we do, you know, the extent of the paving and the repairs. We can always analyze that when they come in. But because we've always been a conservative city, we try to get the money first from prior years, hold it, analyze it, and then go forward with the project once we know we have the money.
So, from a public's perspective, our city doesn't have city treasurer. We have Director of Finance.
Correct.
Some cities vote to have a city treasurer. We don't have that kind of system. I understand the structures. So, you are providing that confidence and assurance that all these four construction projects that happen to be either, either started or are going to be started pretty soon, and they are going to be finished, they are 100% fully funded, and we are not going to be in any potential financial liability for them.
No, I can, I can guarantee you not on that. In the, in the investment report that was approved tonight, we have over $51 million across all of our funds. And like I mentioned, you know, And like I mentioned, you know, four to five million of that is specifically for these street funds, and these are for the projects that you see on the board in front of you. And then also what we're going to present later on in a couple of months for next fiscal year, again, we're going to analyze, are the revenues really coming in there? And then we will cut back if we think the forecast is coming in poorly. We can always cut back on what we plan on spending. So yes, I still feel very confident for this.
Very good. Thank you for your assurance and amplifying my thoughts. And Mayor Protem Elaine Genaway.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just would like to follow on you. The way you answer that has me asking a question. So basically, you're saying the money's in the bank for these projects. And when you say cut back on future projects, if we had to, those are projects that we haven't approved yet?
Correct, yes. I mean, every year, the Public Works Department comes up with different projects that need to get done. But if I come in and I say, hey, the revenues aren't looking that good, we need to scale some of these back, maybe we delay one a year, maybe we can reduce the scope of one project, and that's just part of the normal budget process.
Yeah, and we've done that in the past. So I just wanted to clarify that what you're saying is, when we look at future projects, we will take that into consideration if there has been, if we've received less revenue than we had anticipated.
Correct.
Thank you.
So on item number one, Councilmember Kelly Jennings.
Okay.
Any other questions, reflections?
No further questions, thank you.
All right. So you agree that we can move on to item number two now? And then we are going to decide how we are going to be voting on all of them, in case that we don't want to lump them into one. Okay. The floor is yours.
I don't have any, well, actually, I do have a question on, specific to items two and three together. You note in here that this was the result of, it was a side letter agreement to freeze merit pay. But just a couple of points of clarification. Number one, the merit pay is frozen, it's not canceled. So whether it's now or per the original agreement to reinstate that in July, the reinstatement is retroactive back to the initial period, starting period, when it was intended originally, correct? Give me one second, just look that up, and I'll report that back. We need some hold music while he does this.
We can go to the next question while he-
Yeah, we can go. Do you have any questions on items two or three? Councilmember Sandy Rains?
I actually do. One of the things that concerns me about these two items is, as much as we appreciate our staff, and they've been working really hard during this time, I'm having a difficult time thinking about where we are as a county. Prior to COVID in February, I looked up the EDD and got some statistics. I mean, this is the graph of unemployment. I don't know if you can see it, but it's way up here in Orange County. Prior to that, we were at a 2.9% unemployment, which was lower than the country unemployment rate. And right now, we're still at a 7.4%. And at one point, we peaked at 16% unemployment in Orange County. It seems that it would be very difficult for me to see about restoring increase in pay, although very much earned when there's people in our community who are unemployed. They're not able to pay their rent or their mortgage, or they're not even able to feed their families. A lot of them are, you know, driving through our food drive every other week to pick up food, to fill the gaps. So this is a concern that I have. It's not that it's not earned or whatever. I just feel that it would be a very bad optic for us as a city to look at doing something like this right now. If we continue on the trajectory where we continue to have surplus and the unemployment rate continues to decline, then I could see where that would be something that I could justify. But that is a concern that I have when I look at those two things. I'm just going to hop over real quick and just, I know we're talking about two and three, but these are not pay cuts or change of anything that our staff, you know, didn't, that they had before that they didn't, that they had to give up. So this is, yes, it was something that was negotiated prior to COVID. We've all had to make sacrifices, and I know that it's a sacrifice, but I just feel like it's very difficult to look at that with what I'm looking at and where our county and even our own community is right now. So it's just a comment and thought that I had.
Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to answer the question from Councilmember Sharma.
Please.
Per the side letter agreement, it reads, "No merit-based pay for performance will be implemented during the term of this side letter agreement due to the COVID-19 health pandemic." So it is not stated that it will be something that would happen as of July 1 of the new fiscal year. Which is dissimilar to the 2.5% that's also in discussions this evening.
Any other comments on items two and three? Councilmember Kelly Jennings.
Well, my comments are, I truly appreciate what the staff has done, and I know scrambling with COVID and having to be flexible and working from home and being here is really challenging, because I've endured that, too. So I appreciate all that they have done, and we're going to, we need to pay it either way. So I say I'm wholeheartedly in favor of paying them now. I mean, I think they've gone above and beyond what is expected of them with COVID, and I know the unemployment rate is down, and I know people are struggling, and we have reduced staff. So people are doing more with less here in our city, and they keep it going. So we haven't seen any change in services, and everything has been very challenging for you all. So I just, I really appreciate all you guys are doing and continue to do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor Minigar. I've listened to my colleagues, and I agree with the points that they're all making. I mean, this is a tough decision, and it's a very difficult conversation to be having. I look at our city staff, and I realize that one of the reasons why we have this money to even be talking about is because of the sacrifices and the belt tightening that was done at the very beginning. So many other cities did not respond to the COVID challenge as quickly as we did. So that's one of the reasons why we have this money to be talking about, where are we going to put it? Also, many other cities throughout the state, throughout our county, don't follow the same fiscal principles that we do, which is why we have this money. City has been operating at full operation. The departments are doing all of their work. It may look a little different from the outside because you don't see that interaction, but what's taking place in City Hall and in the departments, they're still working full-time, and that's also with reduced staff. I'm trying to remember, what was the number that we furloughed, like 104 employees?
106 part-time, and we went from 69 to 62 full-time.
Yes. So we reduced our full-time employees, we furloughed 106 part-time employees, and also, a lot of the work that is done in, say, maybe the planning department, or not to pick on any department, but a lot of that is contract work, and that's the benefit of being a contract city. So when the work isn't there, you don't have, you're not paying for employees to do nothing. So that's a huge benefit to being a contract city. So I think, I mean, our staff has been working mean and lean, and I know that there are sacrifices being made in the broader, in the entire community, and I, you know, and one of my things that I say personally is that those of us who are fortunate to still be employed have a greater responsibility to help those who are not through the different organizations, the nonprofits that we work with, to provide that support, to provide that rental assistance, to provide that, those nutrition programs. And when I look at the, this, the merit increases, merit means someone did good work. They deserved it. They were there doing the job, and it's an increase based on good performance for the taxpayers of our city. So I would be in favor of restoring the merit increase. Maybe we wait on the, on item three, if that provides a little more comfort. You know, sometimes we just need to take things one step at a time, ease back into it slowly, and then we can come back to that. But I think those employees who are deserving of a merit increase should receive that. So I would be in favor of restoring the merit increase, and then maybe the MOU salary adjustment, we look at that again come, well, May, isn't May our budget workshop? Yeah, in May, for the next fiscal year. So those are my thoughts on that. Would you like my thoughts on item number four?
Not yet. Not yet.
Okay, Mayor. Thank you.
Because I wanted to, I wanted to go back to items two and three. I have not expressed my comments yet. And that is, you know, it's been almost a year in which so many in our community have faced unprecedented hardship and uncertainty, and this is now, there, hopefully, there are reasons for optimism because of the start of vaccination. So having said that, putting that within the context that, how do I personally, I for one, would see the near future for our city and the county of Orange is that we are definitely and inevitably on the right path, even though the numbers have gone up. But I look at it technically from medical, you know, perspectives, and we have a lot of hopes. Now, in reference to our employees and the reduction, I have wholeheartedly supported our city manager's activities and efforts, and I always have appreciated what our great staff have done in the past and are doing. There is no question about the quality and the merit of any employee that is currently employed with this great city. The question is not any of those. But then, when I migrate from this thinking process and I look at the county and I look at the city of California from a global perspective, to think local, then I see that there are a lot of medical professionals that have been seeing COVID-19 patients, and nobody's getting merit increases. And, and I'm in a lot of those circles, all these doctors that every day they go, they see people that, I hope not, they don't die, but they're going to die. So every day, they're facing that, and then all these medical institutions, not all, the majority of them that I know and I have kept track of, and I have followed about the decisions of their CEOs and those, you know, organizations, how they're behaving, they are saying no merit increases, even though they are the frontline, you know, workers. So then I look at that from that perspective, then I come to our city, and then I say that, okay, so we want to be fair, we want to be equitable, we want to appreciate what the city staff, including at the helm, our city manager and our, you know, deputy city manager, have done for us, which I have, you know, no doubt that they've done their best, then I say that, well, you know, we have moral responsibilities, you know, we, we serve, you know, this is not our money, this is the city's, this is the people's money, that how are we going to, yeah, I see the revenue is positive, kudos to you, kudos to the city manager and the entire city staff by doing an outstanding job. But in light of all those, then I say, I've always practiced to be extremely conservative when it comes down to the expenditure. So, so to go back to what my colleague said, I think that to go with that full percentage at this juncture is premature, but I love to give all employees, everyone, the same merit, you know, percentage that they deserve to get, but not now. So we pause, hopefully, based on all the statistics that I see, hopefully, by the end of June or July, you know, our residents, our citizens, hopefully, would be vaccinated, and then we are going to get back to the norm. And our city, socio-economically, demographically, is far doing better than some other cities in Orange County, and a lot better than LA County and other neighboring counties. So then we can, we can reconstitute, reinstitute, you know, that merit increase. But at this juncture, I wanted to ask for indulgence of my, my city council colleagues that we have two choices, and it's up to my colleagues to decide on that. Do we want to go for a mid percentage? Or we, you know, it's up to you, and I welcome your, you know, your opinions. This is, we are, you know, making a decision respectfully, intellectually, and for the well-being of the citizens of Laguna Nigal. So, so I would entertain that if that option would be of any support, that we go mid percentage, you know, rather than 2.5%, we go like 1.25. But then, the assurance to all the city staff would be, they are going to get 100% of their merits. It's a matter of basically shifting when that percentage is going to kick in, which would be just a few months from now, until we're going to be back to the normal, you know, speed of the economy that we've enjoyed in this great city. So I welcome any feedback that you may have. Councilmember?
Oh, go ahead. Well, one of the reasons why I said the merit increase now and then the MOU salary adjustment later is that's splitting it in half, because they're equal amounts for each. Also, I don't know-
May I interject? So you're suggesting that you agree with 1.25%?
No, I agree with the merit increases for all employees, but I'd say-
At what percentage?
No, that's not a percent. That's based on their position. But the cost to the, for the city is the same dollar amount as the salary adjustments, item number three. And I don't know if we can change the percentage, because that's a contract with the bargaining unit. So I don't know that we have the ability to change that percentage. So that's why if we approved two and then maybe tabled three for our budget workshop, that would bring us to 50% of the proposed increase. Does that make sense?
It does. If I may interject, I wanted to ask our city attorney on that, when it comes down to the negotiations with the county, with the unions, what is our position on that? What we can, what we cannot do?
If I understand from what the deputy city manager said, was that the union did consent to the planned 2.5 salary adjustment scheduled for January 2021, being delayed until July of 2021.
Okay.
And therefore, if you choose to do something more generous than that, I suspect the union would consent to that. But if you were to do something more drastic, then that would require a meet and confer before you could impose that.
Okay, thank you for your clarification, Councilmember.
So the current MOU is to defer till July 1 of 2021. That's what the, they have agreed to. Is that correct?
The side letter agreement that the council approved with adoption of the budget defers the 2.5% salary increase from January 1 to July 1. So it would be the start of the new budget. However, we are talking about two separate things.
Yes.
The merit increase is based upon an employee's annual performance evaluation, and employees who receive a favorable evaluation get anywhere between 1.5% to 3%, which is where that middle came that Mayor Protem talked about. So those are two separate things. However, as I mentioned earlier, the side letter does state that they would forego that.
So if they got their salary adjustment as of January 1, they would forego the merit increase? Is that?
No, just for clarification, the adoption of the side letter said that employees would be delayed on their 2.5% and that they would forego the merit increase based upon their performance evaluation.
So they would forego it. So my concern is this, it's kind of counterintuitive. We have another item on here, which is putting money into a 115 trust for pension obligation, which currently is close to $7 to $8 million for our city. So if you give a merit increase, we're adding to that pension obligation, and we're not in a fiscal position, even though we're healthy right now, we don't know what the next few months hold. And because we've already got a side letter that says they're willing to wait till July 1, I don't see that there is a rush to do that, because if they were restored, would it be restored retroactively to the date that it was originally offered?
If you restore either one, yes. So if you restore the merit increases, that would go back to July 1. So anyone that got a good evaluation would go back and get, depending upon the percentage, and where that- and where that evaluation fell. And if you were to restore the planned, what was planned for January 1, it would go back to that original date.
I think I would be more comfortable with just waiting because they, when it is restored, it's restored retroactively, is what you're saying, correct?
Mm hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? I have a question for our city manager. What is the potential negative ramification of not deciding on items two and three tonight, but to revisit these two items before July 1, 2021?
Yeah, so it's completely up to the council. We, you know, the, we asked the employees to come to the table when we needed the most and we took the most ultra conservative approach to balance the budget. The situation is different, so we wanted to present to you an opportunity. But it's totally the council's choice. If you choose to wait, then we will revisit this when we look at revenues and expenditures for the next fiscal year.
I totally concur with your assessment of the given situation. Due to the pandemic, no agencies in America does have that kind of, you know, confidence that they can make decisions specifically and explicitly financial decisions such as this one at this juncture. So so I mean, I think from a common sense perspective, by then definitely we are going to be in a much better position with regard to the vaccination levels and, you know, the economy. And then way before July 1, we can, you know, we can revisit this and we can vote on it appropriately. So that's my thought, Mayor Protam.
I just have a question. When we restore it, if we restore it now versus, you know, four months from now, is it always going to be restored back to the same date? So are we just kicking the can down the road?
So the MOU increase would be January 1, restored back to what its original intention was and what was originally agreed to, which is January 1 of 2021.
Okay.
So if you restore the merit increases, that's what's on the agenda to restore back to anyone who got an evaluation since July 1 of 2020.
Okay.
Because after that date, even if you got a great evaluation, you didn't get any money because we froze everything.
Right, but I'm saying if this were delayed, it would still go back to that date of July 1 of 2020.
If you did this in May, it would still be the same thing.
So we're just kicking the can down the road because dollar wise, it's not that we're saving money. We're just paying it later.
Correct.
And I'm thinking, I mean, we're talking about people out of work. And I don't know, but statistically, I would say we also have employees that maybe have another wage earner in their house that's out of work. So rather than delaying what we're going to eventually pay them, put the money in their pocket now.
Councilmember Kelly Jennings? Oh, Councilmember Sharma?
Yeah, so responding to that, the 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 net dollar value is going to be the same. Kicking the can down the road tends to have a negative connotation of delavement of the inevitable, but in a negative fashion. What the conversation is affording us is not the savings of money or the expenditure of more money. It's providing liquidity and choice to the city during a period of uncertainty. That's the conversation that we're having.
Well taken. So do we want to vote on items? Oh, Councilmember Jennings, I apologize, I didn't see.
Well, I understand what you're saying. But I I feel it will give a boost to our employees. We are going to pay it to them regardless. We have the money. Our revenues have gone up more than we expected by $2 million, which we didn't expect. But because of your, our city staff reducing what they've been spending. So I think there needs to be a give and take here. And I think they're deserving. It's not everybody's going to get the same, obviously, because it's based on merit. And with the salary adjustments, we already, the city council already agreed to that. So we we owe them that much. And in the whole scheme of it, it's not even a half of a percent of our entire budget is this. It's a half of a half of a percent of our entire budget is this increase that will go for morale increase for our city staff. So I think it's a good faith thing that we do. I understand the plight of everybody else that are unemployed and struggling. I completely understand that. That is not what I'm saying, that we should give our employees this raise. I'm saying that we're doing this because we care about our city staff. We care about the work that they've done. We appreciate the work that they've done and they're deserving of it.
So point of clarification, if I were to vote against either of those, it's not as though I don't care. Thank you.
Any other comments?
No, I just want to put this in perspective, that the dollar amount we're talking about is $108,500. So $108,000 in the whole scheme of what our total city budget is is a very small percentage compared to, I think, what it would mean in individual bank accounts for our employees, for their for their households. And again, these are merit increases. These are ones that they have done good work for the taxpayers of our city. But it's 108,000, not millions.
Councilmember Sandy Rains?
So I want to make sure that I understand Mayor Protam Geno A's comment. So you're suggesting that we give the merit increase and put off the MOU salary adjustment as a compromise? Okay, thank you.
Any other suggestions, amplifications? I want to make sure that we cover all the comments. Very good. Are we ready for a vote on items two and? Number four? No, we said we're gonna vote at the end. If we're gonna compartmentalize them or we're gonna vote in one single vote? No, no, you are correct. Yes, your points are well taken. Let's, very good. Excellent suggestion. Let's go to item number four. Let's see if there are any questions or comments.
So, yes, please, thank you. The the question I have, just a point of clarification, is voluntary on your behalf, right? To sacrifice the 5%.
No one asked me to do it. I did it because everybody was coming to the table and I'm the leader. And so I took a 5% pay cut on my own.
Well, you're not just the leader. It's a sign of a great leader and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly Jennings?
City manager, I really appreciate your sacrifice. And this has been a long time that you haven't been paid your full salary that you were agreed upon. So thank you and thank you for your leadership to our city. And I appreciate your sacrifices. Thank you.
Councilmember Sandy Rains?
So I do want to say thank you, Tammy. It's been, it's been a challenging year and you have led fiercely. And I do want to say, I know we've reduced our staffing, but in in talks that we've had, you've indicated that some of the staffing wasn't something that would probably indicate that you would rehire anyhow and went from 69 to 62, that we would probably end up somewhere in the middle of that. Is that, did I understand that correctly when we had conversations? Would you restore our staff all the way back to 69 again? I'm just asking this question.
No, I'm not planning to restore it.
Okay.
In fact, over the long term, we'll probably recommend further reductions in the future.
Okay, so I guess the the point of, the reason for me saying that is that your leadership in voluntarily taking a 5% pay cut is what real leaders do. And at this point, you've, you know, proven that what you did was you took money away that you were negotiated and that we actually gave you when we hired you. So in this instance, I could, I can see that this would be a place where we would redo, we would restore the salary because it's been a pay cut where the others were not necessarily pay cuts. They were increases that were coming. And I know that a lot of people plan on having those increases. And we're talking about staff working harder and everybody's working harder, whether they're working for our city or whether they're, our mayor indicated, our healthcare workers and our police, fire, everyone's working more and harder. So but no one's offered to take a pay cut. But our city manager did. And in this, in this case, this is where I would draw the line and say, this is where I would want to invest the money that we're gonna give is to give back. That's really, in my opinion, restoration because you're restoring something that you were already given and that you voluntarily gave up. So I'm in favor of restoring the city manager's salary because it was actually a cut. And my question that I have is, if we were to restore the 5%, is it restoring it just as of now or does it retroactively restore? How how do you have that written in here? I didn't.
Councilmember Rains, from a personnel perspective, that's direction that the city council will give.
Okay.
It could be back to the date in which the the reduction was applied voluntarily. Or it could be to the January 1, when the other employees would have received a 2.5% increase. That'd be at the direction of the council. You just need to clarify that.
The pay cut went into effect July 1 of 2020.
So might I suggest that we restore it as of today and then as of now? And then once we look at if, depending on how we vote on the other two items, that then we would restore any back income that was given up during that time? So that's what I would probably suggest. And I'm open to hear what everybody else has to say.
Thank you. Mayor Protam, Elaine Geno A.
Thank you, Mayor. So City Manager LaTerna, I want to thank you for your leadership. I want to make sure our public knows that, the public that's out there in TV land, that you know that we didn't ask City Manager LaTerna to take this pay cut. She told us, she came to the city council right at the start and said that she was taking it. So I believe that she should be, her salary should be corrected back to the original amount, retroactive to when she did take it, because it is a loss to her and to her family that she, this pay cut. And because of her swift and decisive actions in our city, we do have this money to be looking at to how can we make people whole? How can we, what do we do for the city? Also, I just forgot what I was gonna say. No, but it's, I think it's important that it, this, this, oh, I know what I wanted to say. The dollar amount we're talking about is $20,19, because this is the amount from her original contract. So City Manager LaTerna has not had a pay increase since that day she signed on the dotted line to come to a remarkable city. So this is, these are $20,19, not $20,20 that we're talking about. So I would be in favor of making her whole and making it retroactive to July of 2020. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sharma, any questions or comments?
No, I have no further comments.
Very good. Well, I've done my homework. I've looked at all the neighboring cities, the latest. I looked at Laguna Hills. I looked at Dana Point. I looked at basically, you know, the cities that have far lower population. I've looked at what they've done, what they've accomplished, and those numbers are big. Compared with how much our city manager makes in this city, I totally agree on the amount of numbers that with what we have accomplished and what they have accomplished and what they do, what activities they have, they don't come close to what what we have and what you've done. So so with that said, I I'm in total agreement with my city council colleagues for, you know, the full percentage to be restored, to be reinstated. And I think, do we have any disagreement on I, on when or is it going to be effective? January 1 or since you, July 1, 20?
Is when it started, 2020.
Correct? So we are, we're all in agreement that that should be the effective date. So the 5% to be restored and move forward with that. Very good. So I think we are unanimous on this one. And moving on to the last one, item number five, for the $500,000 deposit to City Section 115 Trust. Any comments? Councilmember Sandy Rains?
Well, three months ago, when you gave your update, I asked if we would put money in here. So obviously, I'm happy to see this. I think it's a, I know we started it with a very small amount. This is more significant and it really shows our commitment to meeting our pension obligations to all of our employees and retirees from our city. So I'm 100% in support of using that kind of surplus that we have to take care of obligations that we have. It's the only area where we have an obligation that's not fully funded. And as a city who prides itself on fiscal responsibility, I think this is probably the, of all these items on here today, probably the one I'm most excited to see. So thank you very much.
Any other comments? Councilmember Sharma?
A couple of questions. This, you mentioned that the initial deposit into the fund was $150,000. Was that a portion of what was initially anticipated or that was 100% of what?
When when the account was opened, council direction was to deposit 150,000. So that was the full amount authorized at that time.
Second question, I believe you mentioned that there is some liquidity to the assets if we needed to access those resources for other purposes, that we have that availability.
Correct, yeah, this is with a trustee. So if we needed to use these funds for any future pension costs, this is simply a phone call and the money's back in our hands within a week.
Third question is, if we're not funding it proactively, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a compounding effect of catch up that we need to participate in.
Correct. I mean, there is definitely an aspect of the actuarial assumptions that go into CalPERS data. As Councilmember Rains mentioned, there is, you know, $7 to $8 million of a pension liability on our books. And this asset is trying to offset it. So whenever we find money and the, whenever we have money and the authorization to deposit, anything additional, you know, that's when we come forward. And probably once a year, we're gonna start doing the annual with the budget adoption to put money into this fund.
Understood, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm so excited about this. I know. We, I remember when we were even just talking about the pension trust. This was a couple of years ago. And we had presentations and I think there's some staff members who can remember eyes glazing over when we had different representatives here talking about all of this pension trust and how the money would grow. And I liked it, but it was pretty, pretty in depth. And it took a while to get the 115 trust established because there were, at that time, there were some other possibilities. But then this came to be the most appropriate choice for our city. And I know when we funded it, it was the will of the council at that time that let's get it started and then to fund it every year when we have money. We didn't know at that time what the dollar amount would be. And I know a couple of months ago, when we saw that we had this possibility of these, the revenues coming in at a greater amount than we thought, we thought, oh, yes, that'll go into the 115 trust. And I'm, I'm just so excited that now is the appropriate time for the council to authorize that deposit because this has been a goal of this council and the councils before us too. So I'm glad to see this as part of the recommendation. So thank you.
Councilmember Jennings?
I just want to say thank you for the foresight in this. And it's nice that it's our money and we get to earn the interest on that. So well done. Thank you very much.
Well, I do remember that six years ago, when we were on the city council, we were just debating and discussing on the, you know, unfunded pension liabilities and what cities in California have to go through. Great job, I'm in total agreement with that. Before we make a decision on how we are going to be voting, I just wanted to check with our city clerk. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments on this item?
No, Mayor, there are no comments.
Very good. All right, so I think on item, okay, let's start with item.
Can I make a suggestion, Mayor?
Please.
So items two through five are referenced in the resolution. So if you might want to take? So if you might want to take those first before, and then you can approve the resolution with the amendments.
Is item one not in the resolution?
No, it's, it is the resolution. So these other things are incorporated in it. So if you take those first, then we can make, make the changes if you have changes to it.
Well, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution 2021-1351, items four and five.
Okay, for items four and five, we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second on items four and five?
I'll second that.
Okay. It was seconded by Councilmember Sharma, all in favor of items four and five by signifying aye.
Aye.
Okay. So four and five pass unanimously for the record. Okay, we're set on that. Now, Councilmember Rains, you mentioned that you wanted to separate annual two, three.
No, that was Mayor Protem Jen, Jenny Way.
Genoway.
Yeah. Genoway.
J and G. Yes, please.
May I ask one additional question?
Absolutely, please.
I'm, I'm sorry to prolong this and know everybody's got shows to watch when they get home, right? The, number two, the, the merit increases back to July 2020, it was mentioned that these are based upon job evaluations. So it's my assumption, correct me if I'm wrong, that this is for work that was done prior to that period of time that our staff forewent in preparation for, you know, battening down the hatches, if you will.
Prior to 12 months.
Okay. So with that being said, I would like to pause for a moment of thought. Thank you.
That was good. I've never heard that.
Pause for a moment of thought, so.
This is the first.
Thank you.
This is the first.
That's perfectly appropriate. Yes, you can do that.
Okay. I, I would actually like to make a motion to, to approve number two.
Oh, you want to take them out one by one?
I'll second that.
Okay. All right. Item number two, it was moved by Councilmember Sharma and it was seconded by Mayor Protem Elaine Genoway. All in favor of item number two?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So item two passes unanimously along with items four and five. Now we're left with items one and three, so let's tackle item three and then we're going to wrap it up.
One is the resolution. We don't have to do one, right? It's already, it's the resolution, right?
Well, at the end you will.
We do it at.
We will adopt it with the amendments.
Okay, all right. So then what I, I'd like to make a motion that we table number three for a future date.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Sandy Rains to vote on this item at the future date. Do I have a second on item on the proposed motion?
I will second it.
Okay, it was seconded by Councilmember Sharma. Do I hear aye on the proposed motion? Yes, I'm taking a vote from Councilmember Jennings.
I have a question. Do we need to state the date or?
If, if it is not stated, it's uncertain and then it's up to staff when to bring it back. If the council wants to be specific as to when they want to hear it, then you would include a date.
Okay, all right.
And for the record, based on the amplification and clarification that Mayor Protem Elaine Genoway brought up, that it doesn't change the nature and the amount of the raise. It's a matter of when we are going to be paying that or distribute it to, to the staff.
Yeah, so I think for the date, we should leave that to staff when it's the appropriate time to bring it back.
Okay, so on item number three.
Yes.
No, you two are, yes, I know, I know.
Oh, yes.
Okay. All right. So it passed, item number three passes unanimously per the motion of Councilmember Sandy Rains and it was seconded by Councilmember Sharma, correct? Okay, very good. So we're done with item number three and last but not least, item number one, which is a matter of formality and protocol, yes.
I move that we approve resolution number 2021-1351 as amended.
Any second?
I'll second.
All right, it was seconded by Councilmember.
For clarification, so when we get to the resolution, which is in your packet, the action item number three is what is deleted, basically, and that's the 2.5% employee salary adjustment retroactive to January 2021.
That is correct.
Okay. And that that item is tabled to be brought back at a future date.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And it was unanimous, yes. Very good.
Did we vote?
We did not vote.
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
We did.
I did, I moved it.
Okay, so it was moved and it was seconded by Councilmember Sharma.
You motioned, Sandy.
I second.
Okay, okay. I beg your pardon. It was moved by Mayor Protem Elaine Genoway and it was, it was seconded by Councilmember Sandy Rains. All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it passes unanimously as stated for that modification in the text of the resolution. Very good. All right, I think that concludes our discussion items. So we will now move on to the council reports and city manager report. I wanted to start with Councilmember Kelly Jennings.
Nothing really to report, but just thank you to everyone for all of your sacrifices and all of your hard work. It doesn't go unnoticed and it's much appreciated, so thank you very much.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Sandy Rains?
The first thing that I wanted to report on tonight is I wanted to thank our public works director and our city manager. I approached them a little over a month ago about our bus shelters that we had to put off on the CIP projects. We were going to have all these beautiful bus shelters, but we couldn't do it. And asked if there was any way we could refresh what we currently have and they did their work behind the scenes and found that we could paint them and, and the people that, the Clear Channel who owns the shelters that we're not using anymore will be removing them. So you'll be noticing in our city that we'll have some refreshed, clean, painted bus shelters and some will be removed in the next month or so. So thank you so much for finding a creative way to still make our city look beautiful even though we couldn't improve it the way we really wanted to. So that, that's one of the creative things our staff is really good at and we really appreciate you for doing that. So thank you very much. The other thing is, last week I had the honor of doing a PSA with our Orange County Fire Chief Contras, just to give residents a little bit of information. He's a wealth of knowledge and provided a really great information on how to protect yourselves from and be prepared for wildfires and other kind of emergencies. And with that said, it kind of sparked something for me that I was thinking, I, I've looked through our website and I know, I don't know where it is, if it is there and if it's not, I'm going to request that, do we have some kind of an evacuation plan or an emergency plan that's listed on our website that residents could easily access and know where to go in case of an emergency and what would, you know, what would happen? So I couldn't find it and it might be there and I just might not have been able to find it, but if we could work on something like that, I think it would be a really important thing for us to have for the public safety of our community to know exactly where to go in any type of an emergency and what our evacuation plan is for our city. So I think that's it. So thank you and it's nice to be back.
Welcome back. Councilmember Kelly Jennings? Councilmember Sharma?
I'm often mistaken for Kelly, so it's okay. So I want to thank my council colleagues for a healthy discussion on the finances of our city. You know, in our position, we're nothing more than stewards of the resources that we've been given and we owe a great responsibility and due diligence to our residents to make healthy and proper decisions for the longevity of our community. This last week, last two weeks actually, I've been busy with the League of California Cities. They had an introductory session or seminars for new mayors and new council members. Also completed several compliance trainings, which are always very fulfilling and enjoyable. If you haven't had the pleasure of doing those, maybe volunteer some time to do it sometime. Also, we've finished our first vector control board meeting, so nothing major of importance to report there other than we had new elections for leadership with the board and I look forward to getting to know my colleagues there as well. So, thank you.
Thank you for your report. Mayor Protem Elaine Genoway?
Thank you, Mayor. Since our last meeting, I was re-elected as the Chair of the Orange County Public Library Advisory Board. So I'd just like everyone to know that this year is the 100th anniversary of the Orange County Public Library. So there's lots of activities and contests and things, so please go to ocpl.org. They're also having a contest to read 100 books this year. So, and there's prizes and things like that, but be sure to check out the library website because in addition to books and DVDs that you can check out, they also have quite a few online classes and resources. Last week was the Association of California Cities Legislative Committee meeting and it's the start of the legislative cycle. The final day for our legislators in Sacramento to introduce bills is February 19th. We've already identified some bills that are of interest or concern to Orange County businesses and residents and we'll be continually identifying such bills and either providing comment, hopefully they will change the bill before it gets passed, or to take a position of warranted and that position is taken on behalf of Orange County residents. I spent the last two days in Sacramento, virtually that is. So it was the ACCO Sacramento Advocacy Trip. This is something that we usually do in person, but this year it was done via Zoom. So we had quite a number of state senators and assembly members come speak to us, as did the state treasurer. And you know, it's very interesting, depending on who is from what part of the state and how they view certain things. And I will tell you, housing will continue to be a major issue. And to quote our own senator, "There's an absolute zeal to create intense densification." So this is something that is going to be a challenge and we need to speak with one loud voice from Orange County and especially South County because our topography does not lend itself well to the density that they're talking about. And you know, parking is one of the major issues and with a, the number of the bills that are going through, that we saw go through the state legislature last year and we know are coming back, there's, where the city would have no control over parking requirements as well as other things. And this is why we keep talking about local control and being able to discuss and have input on, you know, our land use. That's what a city council is supposed to do. And so, and one thing I brought up, because you know, one of the things that has pitted neighbor against neighbor here in Laguna Niguel over the years have been parking issues. And that is something we've seen quite a bit of at our Traffic and Transportation Commission and here at city council where residents would come and request to have permit parking in their neighborhood to keep out other people from parking there. And that is a huge issue. That is not something that legislators or councils or anyone from other parts of the state really believe. So I brought up the fact that, you know, we've done a parking study here and, and have other, our Orange County cities, we have the data. So that is something that we should be providing and supplying this input while they're making the decisions to see. It's not just us saying we don't want certain things in this area, in this geography, but also we have the data that supports it. So that's something that, it was well received and I hope it's something that, that they will ask us for. So City Manager Letourno, be prepared for a phone call. You'll know where that came from. Also, I have something, if you could please look into, the League of California Cities has the Support Local Recovery Coalition and it's very in line with what we are already doing here in Laguna Niguel. And I'll give you this flyer after the meeting, but I think it's, it doesn't, didn't appear to be have any cost, but it may give us access to some more resources. And last comment, Virgil, for Captain, welcome to Laguna Niguel and welcome to our family. We're glad you're here. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I attended quite, quite a few different meetings, but the most important one was that as a representative of the six South Orange County coastal cities, I attended OCAG meeting, Orange County Council of Governments, and these are the final results with reference to the Reno appeals, which is Regional Housing Needs Assessment. Out of 191 cities in Southern California within six counties, 52 appeals were presented to the Subcommittee of SCAG. Out of the 52 appeals that I got the report on, there were four cities that have asked for increases in the Reno allocation numbers, including top on the list was City of Santa Ana. Sure to the point, only two appeals out of 52 was, were granted. One was for the county of Riverside because SCAG had made a mistake in reference to allocation of the housing units. Their mistake was about 200 units in Riverside County that it belonged to American Indian tribes. So mistakenly, they had to correct that and they had to give it back to readjust other numbers. And the second jurisdiction was that approved by, by the Appeal Board, which is comprised of Mayor of Yorba Linda Peggy Wong and Councilmember Bucknam, Wendy Bucknam of the neighboring city Mission Viejo. And then the second city was City of Pico Rivera in Los Angeles County, that their case, their appeal case was approved because the US Army Corps of Engineers had analyzed, you know, the dam that happened to be within the jurisdiction of the city of Pico Rivera. And they said that dam has 90% probability that it may collapse. Because of that risk factor, because of the hazard factor, then the Appeal Board, the Subcommittee of SCAG, elected officials, agreed that the two, sorry, 3,000 housing units had to be adjusted, had to be taken out for allocation for, for the city of Pico Rivera. And then the bottom line for us in Orange County, for the city of Laguna Niguel and other cities would be that they are going to readjust all the numbers. The majority of cities are going to get single-digit increases. Who is going to be getting what? Who is not going to be getting what? We don't know that yet. It is still fluid because they have to send it back to HCD in Sacramento and they are going to be discussing that sometime in mid-February. Then it's going to come back to us on the Regional Council of SCAG on March the 4th for the final vote. Based on my past experience during the past five years, basically whatever decision they make because of the majority of, how can I say to be politically correct? The majority of the membership of SCAG would be, you know, we are pro local control, we are pro, you know, we always favor, you know, that kind of control, but most likely whatever numbers they're going to come up with, they're going to adjust basically, even though if I would be voting on behalf of the six cities that I represent, no, the majority of the votes going to go in favor of the final decision that they are going to be making. So with that, that's what's going to be coming up with regard to Reno numbers and it's going to be for, anything that we're going to be doing, it has to go to the next cycle, which is the seventh cycle. So we are going to be thinking about that, what would be required and what is not going to be required. And with the help of our city manager, we sent a letter to our Senator Pad Base in reference to the position that our city is going to be taking to oppose Governor Newsom's proposed state budget for the fiscal year 2021, 2022, in reference to local accountability framework on, on the governor's proposed budget because of allocating $4.3 million for the state agency to, you know, to create a sub, you know, division to keep track of how city council members, how planning commissioners in 484 cities in California would be voting on with regard to the allocation of, or the potential reinforcement of the Reno numbers that would be finalized on, you know, in the month of March. So with that, I wanted to conclude my comments and I wanted to turn it back to our capable city manager, Tammy Letourno.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I have a few updates this evening. First, regarding COVID-19 vaccinations, I want to assure you and the community that city staff is working daily with the county, the state and the
that city staff is working daily with the county, the state and the federal government to make sure anyone who wants a vaccine will get a vaccine. I'm sure that everyone's aware at this point, those eligible are healthcare workers, public safety personnel and individuals over the age of 65. And there is more demand for the vaccine than there are vaccines available. This is going to get better and improve over time. I have a few updates I want to share with everyone. First, in Orange County, we have two what are called super pods for vaccination locations. One is at Disneyland and one is at Socha University in Elizso Viejo. All pods are handicapped accessible, but appointments are required. And those interested in getting a vaccine should register through the county's system, Othena, O-T-H-E-N-A dot com. And appointments are released as the vaccine becomes available. So I know people are frustrated because they get, they register and they get put in the waiting room. That's because there's no vaccines available. So as soon as they get, know they're going to have vaccines, then they open up appointments. So I encourage everyone to refresh their app or go online and check that daily. And anyone who needs help registering can call the county's COVID hotline at 714-834-2000, Monday through Friday from 8:30 to 5:00. And here's even better news. I just received a news alert before I walked into the council chambers. Starting on February 9th, CVS is going to start offering COVID vaccines to Southern California. And to begin, the closest ones in CVS locations in our area that are reported that they will have the vaccines are Huntington Beach, Irvine and Newport Beach. And they will expand the number of locations as vaccines become available. Anyone interested can register at CVS.com or call 800-746-7287. We are updating our website daily. We will have this information and any new information up there. And we get that up as soon as possible. And we also push all of the information out through all of our social media platforms. So that was great news. I also want to remind everyone, Orange County is offering free at-home COVID-19 test kits. The kits are delivered to your home via FedEx and they include a prepaid return label and results are available within 24 to 48 hours. Orders can be placed on Orange County Health Department website. And we also have link to that information on the city's website as well. The city in partnership with the Red Cross will be hosting another blood drive in COVID-19 antibody testing clinic on Tuesday, February 16th at Crown Valley Park. The mobile blood mobile will be parked onsite and appointments will be available online. Anyone interested in registering can do so at redcrossblood.org and put in the sponsor code CITYLN and you can register for an appointment. The Parks and Recreation Department in collaboration with the Wellness and Prevention Center is hosting a free mental health workshops for middle school and high school students, February through May. The first workshop is scheduled for Wednesday, February 24th from 5:00 to 6:00 via Zoom. And promotion and event registration for this event can be found through the Parks and Recreation section of our city webpage. And lastly, Saddleback Church is hosting a drive-through grocery distribution this Saturday, February 6th, from 9:00 to 11:00 at Los Alisos Intermediate School. For more information, you can visit saddleback.com backslash get food. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We are now adjourned at 8:55 PM. Thank you and stay healthy and well.